This is the Budget Subcommittee Meeting. Madam Secretary, would you do the roll call?
Yes, thank you. Board Member Bartholomew?
Yes.
Vice Chair Noni?
Here.
And Chair Wright?
Here.
Let the record reflect that all board members are present.
I don't think we're using microphones today, so don't worry about that. Remote participation is not needed. Public comments. We are now taking public comments on item three. Public comments. If you in the room, please move the microphone or speak and wait for the timer to appear on the screen. So now Director Burke, could you introduce item four point one?
Sure. Thank you Chair Wright and members of the Subcommittee. Our item today is our Santa Rosa Water Fiscal Year 2526 Water, Wastewater Regional and Stormwater and Creeks Budget Overview. And Nick Harvey, our Deputy Director of Administration, as well as Liz Hanley, our Supervising Engineer with Asset Management Team, will be making the presentation.
Good morning Chair Wright. Subcommittee Member Nick Harvey, Deputy Director of Administration with Santa Rosa Water. And today we're going to cover our Fiscal Year 202526 Water, Wastewater, Regional Reuse, Stormwater and Creeks, O and M and CIP Budgets. And we'll see ending with a request for your recommendation to the full board of set budgets. Again, we'll go over all of the operating budgets for each of our three water enterprises and stormwater and creeks. We'll do some CIP review, look at the remaining budget schedule, and again, request your recommendation. In terms of overarching assumptions, developing the next year's operating budget, we were assuming water deliveries to increase at 1.1%, which is consistent with my annual modeling in form of our five-year rate proposals. We're assuming wastewater use will remain flat largely due to sewer caps. Development will remain stable. And another reminder that our rates will increase per the current proposed five-year schedule should City Council adopt, formally adopt the rate schedule at their April 1st public hearing, those being 6% for three years for both water usage and fixed rates, followed by two years of 7%. And then five years of 5% increases for the sewer, sewer usage and fixed components. Starting with, looking at expenditure increases, these are the general themes we're seeing across all enterprises. I'll get into some line item specifics as they apply in individual operating funds. But we're starting with a 9% salary increase department-wide. And that's actually something the city's implementing citywide. It accounts for the 4% MOU increase. It'll be coming July 1st, 2025. And 5% equity increase consideration for the equity increases from the class and compensation study that's currently underway. A couple of position changes. These were late additions. We did not talk to you all about these at our last meeting. But we have proposed one potential reclassification of the local sewer enterprise, six reclassifications and four additional positions in the regional enterprise. It is important to note that these are very potential or preliminary approvals. They are not by any means formally approved by either HR or the City Manager's Office at this point. But we're hoping they will be, but we'll keep you apprised as we progress through the budget approval process. Insurance premiums and overhead are largely global and are assigned and programmed by both risk and finance. And the rest of the categories here have general increases, but I think, I'll give more detail further in the presentation on those individual line items. We're seeing modest O and M increases for each of our operating funds, especially in light of the 9% salary increases and the upward pressure we're seeing across many past cost categories. Stormwater and creeks are only increasing by 1% in aggregate with about 23% of their funding provided by the general fund for next year. So our total proposed budget for 202526 inclusive of water, sewer and stormwater and creeks is about $110.5 million. Regional figures aren't included here as they involve impacts to our partner agencies, which we like to evaluate separately. Personnel costs and wholesale water purchases continue to be our largest O and M expenditure categories. And the biggest takeaway here, in my opinion, is CIP budget. We plan on delivering approximately $33.2 million in capital projects, which represents a return to the capital investments in our long-term financial planning. We had to cut CIP budgets for the fiscal year down to 14.4 million to manage our reserve balances on a budgetary basis. So this budget proposal more than doubles our current year figure. So we're very happy. So our Water Operations Fund is showing a 3.8% overall increase in O and M costs. You'll know that salaries are only up about 3% despite the 9% assumed increase in this category. That's due to an increase in anticipated salary reimbursements, which lowers the net figure. So if we have local crews that are housed on the water section, for example, and they do some sewer main work, the sewer fund would reimburse them. So we're anticipating further reimbursements for next year. As far as O and M projects, our O and M project budget in this fund is down quite a bit, about 93%. So as a reminder, project budgets don't turn back to the fund like our other O and M cost categories. And we have healthy carryover balances in those projects. So we're just going to continue to accrete those available funds rather than deducting money. So this line item is going to appear. Electricity, the 36% increase is driven by the current year actuals trending higher than our budget. And we're also making an upward adjustment for demand and anticipated PG&E rate increases. And part of the upward adjustment for demand is the expectation that the well at Place de Play will be online next year. And so we're anticipating higher energy demands due to that operation. And the water billing costs increase correlates to the increased cost for staffing software contracts and outside services in our water billing sections. And our overhead category is uncontrollable and is increasing by 10%. Two main factors affecting our water purchase budget are water delivery volumes and changes to the Sonoma Water wholesale water rate. Again, we assume a 1.1% increase in delivery volumes attributable to growth. And as you all have heard, a wholesale rate increase of 8.68% from Sonoma Water bringing the total value of this line item to $21.6 million for next year's budget. And the total O and M budget for the water enterprise, $46.1 million for next year, was most of that, most of that being dedicated to our water purposes. I think this, this chart always serves as a healthy reminder of just how much of an impact that one line item has on our operating costs. Wastewater Operations Fund is programmed for an 11.9% overall cost increase in the O and M budget. Miscellaneous, the increase in the miscellaneous categories driven by the pumps at the West College Diversion Facility. Those pumps have been under warranty in the past. So presumably if anything happened with those pumps and they were down, the manufacturer would provide replacement service and parts if needed. But those pumps are now out of warranty, so we're budgeting funds for repair, for repair costs and the cost of pump rentals should there be any pump failures during the year. And you'll see that the uncontrollable increase in insurance is really hurting this fund this year. 75.3% increase year over year. That's pretty alarming, but again, that's assigned out by our risk department and we unfortunately have no control over that line item. And you'll note that we've also programmed a capital outlay expenditure of $100,000 for the year, and that is to get the West College Diversion Facility online with our state-owned telemetry. So here's the, I'm going to propose $15.9 million budget for local sewer with the majority of the budget funding personnel, water billing and overhead costs. And real quick, you know, the administrative and overhead cost looks kind of outsized compared to the water chart. The budgets are actually very similar in each fund. It's just the scale on the water looks so much smaller because of the effects of the water purchase budget on that chart. They're very similar. So here's a look at our regional operating fund with proposed increases of 11% overall. So there is a sharp increase in the O and M project budget for regional, 91.8%. This is attributable, attributable to the purchase of a line for biosolid land application, funding the replacement and repair of Delta Pond Pump Number One, the refurbishment of press-reducing valves on the Geyser System, and ever-increasing regulatory and permitting costs. Electricity costs are increasing again owing to current year's actuals trending above budget plus consideration for possible rate increases next year. And again, these costs should be tempered somewhat once the new UV disinfection system is online. We expect that to be a little more efficient. So we're looking forward to seeing those effects. Here's a breakdown of the total regional expenditures for next year inclusive of the planned miscellaneous revenues represented by net, by negative figures that reduces the expenditure allocations of the fund. Personnel costs, debt service, and capital expenditure are the most significant budgetary categories for the fund as clearly demonstrated by the chart. This is a summary of the refund reserve balance as of June 30, 2024 is allocated to each partner agency. Santa Rosa and Cotati are now holding positive reserve balances. For several years there, we both had, us and Cotati both had negative balances in the refund reserve. As you can see, $5.9 million was generated in this reserve balance last year owing largely to success for our truck waste program, strong interest in miscellaneous revenues and over $2 million in salary savings due to base. As a reminder, each of the regional partner agencies do own their respective reserve balances and are free to use them as a hedge against future cost allocations or even cash them out and have AP just refunds of funds to them. To hear the total regional partner allocations for next year, increases are very modest, including a reduction in the overall projected allocation for Sebastopol. The modest overall increases in the allocations are driven primarily by the $3 million overall reduction in debt service due to just how the amortization schedules are configured. There's just a natural dip in our debt service schedules. Also Sebastopol share of the region was also decreased last year, so that contributed further to the net decrease in their allocation. And as you may recall from our prior meeting, as well as our rate-setting process, we are planning a $35 million bond issuance to fund the electrical infrastructure replacement project out at the Laguna Treatment Plant. The assumptions, as they've been built into our rate modeling and financial planning, do assume a 30-year amortization, 5.5% interest rate. And we, based on those assumptions, we think the debt service payments would be approximately $2.6 million per year annually over thirty years. And since these debt service payments would go to fund infrastructure at the plant, it's common to all agencies, we do plan on allocating that percentage the same as our CIP contributions and using that $2.6 million annual estimation, allocating it using the same percentages as CIP. We think that the totals for each agency at the bottom are roughly what we'd estimate the annual impacts to be to each of our partner agencies. Santa Rosa is obviously having the largest impact. It's $1.8 million. To my understanding, the finance has been working on securing outside contracts for both financial advisory and bond legal services. So we are hoping to issue these bonds by the end of the calendar year. Here's a look at our operating fund reserves as of June 30, 2024. So things common to each of the three funds are that operating reserves are always set at 15% of operating costs. Catastrophic reserves have been set based on the catastrophic reserve policy that's currently in place, so we don't see fluctuation there. And the rate stabilization in wastewater and regional have both held steady year over year. So when we talk about the effect of our operations and budgeting on our reserve balances, we're really talking about the undesignated refund or the undesignated reserve balances in both of the local operating funds and the refund reserve in regional. So as you can see, the, the water undesignated fund balance as of June 30, 2024 is $15.3 million. Our 2324 operations netted $470,000 net addition to that balance at year-end. The year-end wastewater undesignated reserve balance is 14, just under 14.8 million with operations for the fiscal year adding just over a million dollars to that reserve balance. And again, the regional refund reserves at $8.8 million is 5.8% that's being generated in fiscal year 2324. So when we speak of undesignated fund balance, there's two main drivers to, to that, those being operations or revenue rather and expenses. So as a reminder, for the current fiscal year, we heavily reduce CIP to passive balance budget in all of our operating funds. So in water, we budgeted for a net surplus of $942,000. For the fiscal year 2526 proposed budget, we are budgeting for a deficit of approximately $5.1 million. That may sound alarming at first blush. But if you keep in mind our undesignated reserve balance of $15 million and also consider that there is a deficit planned for in our financial modeling as it pertains to the rates, this is actually in line with our long-term financial plan. As you all know, we, we, we don't want to overly deplete reserves, but we want to manage them responsibly as well. So this is part of that plan, and even though it looks like a large deficit, it is in line with, with our expectations. Quick note on reserves, part of the financial plan also, you may recall, there's been a lot of detail. So we are planning based on the rate consultant's recommendation as well as an outside consult study that's performed several years ago. We are planning to propose an increase in the catastrophic reserve balances in the next year. So, so that is also part of the plan. So between that and controlled deficit spending, we plan on keeping ours, undesignated reserve at a responsible level while also planning for the impact of future fires, earthquake events, give ourselves more time. Looking at the revenue versus the expenditure chart for our local wastewater enterprise, again, we surplus budgeted $890,000 for the current fiscal year. Sorry, my header on the right side seemed to have disappeared on me. But if you look at the revenue versus expenditures, that nets out to a $6.9 million plan deficit. And again, our, could sound alarming, but our rate modeling plans for a $7.2 million net operating deficit in the local wastewater fund. So both, both local funds are looking good. We're able to deliver full CIP dollars and stay within the parameters of our long-term financial plan. Okay, stormwater and creeks operating funds in Agar. So this includes the stormwater operating fund 1671, the creeks operating fund 1672, and the general fund piece, which goes a long way to funding our personnel costs. So a lot of this, some of this picture relating to this 1% very modest increase is because of that general funding aspect, the downtown did ask stormwater to reduce their overall general fund expenditures by approximately $40,000, I believe. So that contributes to this. And then also you see, so that 1% increase is driven by increased fleet overhead and IT costs. And the, you'll also notice that in spite of 9% salary increase assumptions, it's only increasing 3.1% benefits and actually showing a slight decrease. And that's due to an increase in anticipated project chargeouts by staff. So if stormwater staff charge time to CIP projects, those CIP budgets absorb those costs on a net basis and the operating fund is reimbursed for those costs. So we're seeing again a netting of planned reimbursement for this fund. And then here's a look at the stormwater creeks operating maintenance budget of $3.3 million approximately by category largely composed of staffing and outside contract costs. And we showed you the year-end reserve balances and, you know, the local funds and the regional enterprise. So we also want to show you those results with stormwater. So 1671, our stormwater enterprise ended fiscal year 2324 with an undesigned fund balance of $738,000 with 2324 operations resulting in a net reduction of just under 6,500. Good news is though, our stormwater creek restoration fund ended the year at $1.3 million and had added $23,452 as a result of 2324 operations. And this is a high-level summary of what we're planning to invest in our capital projects next year for all of our enterprises. And we'll be spending the rest of this presentation offering a more detailed look at those CIP proposals. So water, we're planning on delivering $15.5 million capital program up from just $9.5 million last year due to the cuts. And those broken out by category, as you see on the right, obviously spending a lot of money investing in our groundwater infrastructure and a lot in linear assets, pipes in the ground. Local sewer, we're planning a $14.3 million CIP investment up from just $3.3 million last year. We had to cut $10 million from that budget, or for the current year, I should say. So we're planning to deliver $14.3 million with the lion's share that invested lift stations and facilities as well as sewer mains and services. Regional CIP, we did deliver the planned $11 million CIP budgeting last year for the regional enterprise, and we're continuing our kind of perpetual $1 million a year, year over year increase. So that puts $12 million to the 2526 proposed budget. Split fairly evenly between, you know, the planning and studies, our reuse infrastructure and the plant infrastructure. Stormwater is planning to deliver a $3.3 million capital program. Most of that going towards storm drains and some going to creeks and master planning efforts. And you all have the CIP planning documents that we use every year in front of you. I just wanted to give you a real quick primer on how, how we read these. So you have, each, each enterprise has the one- and five-year pie charts showing the planned allocations for CIP benefit. But the funding sheets themselves, you'll notice on the left-hand side of each funding sheet is gray headers followed by solid color headers on the right-hand side. And you'll see the word request over year one on the right-hand side. That's because of the five-year plan, that's the only budget we're ever actually asking you to formally request because City Council obviously only formally adopts one year. Year one is what we're formally asking you adopted. Years two through five are simply planning tools for asset management in our CIP. Gray headers on the left essentially explain everything that's happened in each project up until this point. Everything on the right from the year-one request going right is everything we're planning to execute in the next five years. And everything that's happened up to this point, that includes all of our carryover budget, the entire budget history, mid-year revisions, year-to-date and assumption-to-date expenditures, contract encumbrances, and what's sitting available in the key today. We also have funding type. There's four funding types, so canceled project is a project expected to be completed by the end of fiscal year. Continuing project is a project that has current appropriations. And we're continuing to fund it with further CIP appropriations in the future. to fund it with further CIP appropriations in the future. Carryover projects are projects that have available budget, but we're not planning on giving any further budget in the five-year plan. And new projects are projects that don't currently have budget, and they're slated to get their first funding at some point within the five-year CIP plan. If there are any particular questions on how these sheets work, more than happy to to answer them now. I know it kind of ran through that quickly. We're more than happy to go over to Liz if you want.
Well, I have some questions about what you've covered so far.
Yeah.
All right. So first, a comment. One of your very first slides showed total funding of a hundred and ten million dollars. And and did that that total funding was never contrasted on another slide with a combined expenditure number? So at some point in time, I'd like to see, you know, kind of a side-by-side revenues and expenditures and how they match up for the fiscal year. And I mean, I did it in my head, and it looked like they were about the same. I mean, a hundred and ten on expenditure side and and revenue side, too, when I added all three of them up together. But I mean, it just it would be helpful to compare. It seems to be, and I've found this for years and years and years and years, a lot of focus on expenditure side and not much focus on the revenue side in comparing it and making sure that they have a relationship. And if they're not apparently compatible, then there's an explanation for it. And there often is because of carryovers and all that kind of stuff. So I don't expect it to be, you know, balanced budget internally, but just seeing a comparison of revenues and expenditures on a on a slide would be helpful at some point in time.
So we do address that later on in the presentation with those R charts. Yeah, you know, over the years, we've we've had requests for more information and then less information at times. So we're always trying to stress that.
There you go.
Yeah, more than happy.
Cross to bear. Okay, well, that was just a comment.
So that would be this, these slides, we attempted to do that, broken out by category on the right.
But again, you're dividing up, you're looking at three, you're separating wastewater from water and from region, you know, and in no place is the overall budget, you know, compared. So that that was, that's just a comment. It's not a criticism really, even it's just something that I I would like to see at some point in time, but not critical. The ten percent automatic overcharge we're getting internally from the city, do we view that to be a reasonable overhead charge? I mean, is that is that comparable to what we in fact consume from from city services?
Well, so overhead. Overhead in government, so overhead in government is very different from overhead in private industry. So like manufacturing, they would say, oh, we take three percent of overhead and allocate to these budgets or whatever. In the city, we collect actual costs, and that becomes an entire overhead pool. So central service departments such as city attorney's office, accounts payable, accounts receivable, financial reporting, accounting, the budget team, all those central, yeah, HR, all those central services, they have to, they have to fund themselves because they have no outside revenue streams. So and and by law, by the governmental accounting standards states that the city has to have one hundred percent cost recovery for all of its central services and that those need to be charged out on a pro rata basis to benefiting departments. And so we have a consultant or the finance department as a consultant that comes in every year, gathers the prior year actual expenditures for central services, goes through a big matrix to allocate those costs out to the benefiting departments, including us, obviously. And unfortunately, those numbers are what they are. I mean, it could be a ten percent increase, it could be two percent, it could be forty percent.
I didn't realize how how those how the allocations were arrived at. So thank you for that. That helps me to understand. And so it's not really not really a question that we have a qualitative opportunity to change the allocations. It's there's a process and it spits out a result. And and so thank you for helping me to understand that better.
And I would just add to next point, it's it's a cost allocation plan. We are very cognizant and finance is very cognizant of what can and cannot be charged to our water and wastewater rates. There's a question every year at budget when I meet with finance team and city manager. First question is asked about any concerns about issues with Prop two eighteen and those costs. So we know, you know, it's reviewed every year. It's the best information that we have based on what people are doing to support our department. So I would say a short answer to your question is they are accurate.
Okay.
And so, yeah.
Good, good. That's comforting enough. Thank you. Next, we have big increases in electricity across the board and, you know, under the line item, like under line of utility. So as a board of public utilities, what are we doing to decrease those electricity costs, if anything? Is there anything that's in the pipeline? Is the UV completion going to materially decrease the electricity needs? Or how are we addressing, if at all, the increasing cost of electricity?
I'm not intimately familiar at the operational level, how what we're doing to hedge against those costs. I don't know, Director Burka likes that.
So we, you may recall that we did energy optimization plans for each of the utilities. We continue to look at and consider those plans, what can be implemented. We continue to have our energy and sustainability team audit programs, look at where we can implement any, you know, increases in efficiency or increases in in program participation. I believe we just were able to take advantage of, for example, a snow machine power program where we were able to change out a hot water heater for more efficient. And then we anticipate that the UV, the new project that my friend is working on, that we are going to see about four hundred and forty thousand, give or take, reduction in energy costs over with the new project being installed versus what we currently consume. It is a very high energy cost. So we are looking at every opportunity that we can that's reasonable to increase our efficiency and reduce our electricity usage. That said, you know, we do still have increases that are happening. We are part of the Evergreen program for snow machine power, and that the council directive in decisions, so our electricity costs are higher.
I mean, this may be wildly inappropriate, but I mean, have we ever considered things like, you know, having our own solar farms, you know, like floating solar panels on our storage ponds and all that kind of stuff?
Those are in our energy optimization plans and projects that we've considered, but nothing has quite risen yet with all the competing needs that we have. But we we it is a project. It is a one of our top recommended potential projects. It's just from an operational perspective.
Net savings, you know, I mean.
Well, there's the electricity side, but there's also the operation side and the other pieces, learning from others. I know in particular, just anecdotally, I had a lot of conversations with Petaluma as they were going through their floating solar, there were a lot more hiccups than they anticipated. So I think it's one of those things that we have to continue to really analyze. You know, there's great savings potential, but there's other impacts that we have to understand.
Let's see. I guess the next thing I had a question about was, oh, on on the bond issue, I just curious, do do the regional partners have to agree to the bond issuance since we're allocating expenses to them? I mean, or is that something that they have to?
Yes, but we usually don't run into issues with that because it's the projects that drive bonds, it's not the bonds that drive projects. So so we don't just say, hey, we want thirty five million dollars, what do you want to spend this on? We say we have this operational need, it's going to cost this much. So, yeah.
That makes total sense. And then I guess the last thing I had, the stormwater creeks fund is so much smaller than everything else. And I guess my question is, have have we done an assessment as to the needs, the needs? I mean, in other words, it's kind of like master planning for, you know, what what do we have to do to keep this, you know, this structure, you know, the stormwater structure in the creeks in good in good shape if we can't treat them like a utility and assess a tax for them? So I mean, have we assessed the actual need compared to what we have available?
We are working on that as we speak. So we have our first ever storm drain master plan. It is going to show that we are very much underfunded for that utility. That's not, that's prized to us. And trying to determine sort of what, how that's going to go forward. We have had some initial discussions with the finance team about looking at the potential for an additional assessment. We would want to do everything we can to keep our current assessment, so we wouldn't want it to be a full-on, you know, replacement. We probably want it to be an addition to in case it doesn't pass, and then we lose everything. And also, we're continuing to explore, you know, opportunities for utility, but it is something that is very concerning because there are challenges. So we're really hopeful that someone else will go first and bear the brunt of those costs. You know, that said, I think you're gonna, I'm sure you've seen in the paper that the general fund is under quite a bit of scrutiny and quite a funding challenge. And general fund is what's supposed to support the storm drain infrastructure. And so it's a continued discussion that we have with city manager's office and the finance team. But you are absolutely right, there's not enough budget to invest in the infrastructure. And all we really have at this point in time is enough funding to almost cover the regulatory requirements that we have.
Well, I I know we've been waiting to see if somebody else will go first and in, you know, suffer the litigation consequences, but there's going to come a point in time, it seems, where the degradation to the system and the cost to repair that justifies the risk associated with the litigation. And my understanding is that we've got a pretty strong case for it being a legitimate source of a legitimate exercise of the taxing power to assess a tax for for support of creeks and stormwater. So the legal merits of the claim, I haven't looked at in detail, but my understanding was it's pretty good, it's just that we know we're going to get sued.
I think on the assessment, it's a matter of what the city as a whole is looking for, right? So can we go, what's the polling look like? What does the general fund need? What are the?
Polling is a political issue, I'm talking about the legal issue.
Yeah, so so on the assessment side, it's more of a, can we go forward at a time? And what would that look like? On the ability to be a utility, I will tell you, I have talked with many attorneys, and they are split fifty fifty.
Really? Okay.
So they can argue it both ways. They can argue with that it is not a, because it would be a Prop two eighteen, which means that the property related.
Right.
Who says that property is actually generating that stormwater issue that's going into it? And who says it's not? But you can claim if it's not, but not coming for the properties, then where would it come from? They can argue it both ways. It's a fifty fifty split. Everyone I've talked to, no one said, I have not talked to anyone, others may have on the stormwater side, but every attorney that I've talked to about it, they're split.
Is there a stormwater utility anywhere in California?
Not yet.
Everybody's looking at everybody else. You go first, no, you go first, you go first.
And I'm just not sure anyone's confident that it'll be successful. Because it is not, you know, it's it's legislation. It's not, so Prop eighteen is constitutional. That would, you know, that would be the guiding decision-making versus the legislation that says you can do it. So trust me, we've, we we talk about it all the time. I mean, it is something that if I knew we could do it, we'd be in front of you saying, let's do it.
It just occurs to me that perhaps we need to start building public awareness of the lack of funding that we have and and project out in the future what the storm drains and the creeks are going to look like with fancy AI pictures that are awful.
Yeah, and that's a great segue to what our master plan is going to be showing us and all of the needs that we have, and also a flood study for downtown that's going to be showing all the needs that we have. So both of those are going to be things that are really going to help us with the message and planning. It's just, it's taken us quite a bit of time to even build up the funding to do our first ever master plan. So we should be having that, you know. We will definitely be bringing that in front of the board, educating the board and the council. We have a draft right now that's being reviewed by staff, and they still haven't let me see it yet. It might have very big dollar signs in there.
All right, thank you. That answers my question, thank you.
Yeah, just to kind of dovetail on what the stormwater lawsuit piece, are we, do we have relationships with other organizations that might be amicus for us in something like that?
Okay. So we're, we belong to the California Stormwater, it's CASWA, remind me what CASWA stands for.
California Association of Stormwater Quality.
Oh, come on, Sean, I thought you would know it. So CASWA, which is a stormwater entity, we have also brought this up. I am on the Association of California Water Agencies, our Aqua Board of Directors, been pushing on trying to have a stormwater storm drain task force in Aqua. We've gotten commitment from staff that they're going to start it, they haven't started it yet. It's been something that we bring up, the city manager brings up through, we've got California City. So there's a number of different pockets where this is definitely being looked at and being supported.
I also wanted to ask, in the upcoming master plan, because creeks is quite a bit less than storm drains, so just wondering if it's going to clearly outline what the kind of the the needs are in each one and how you come to that.
So we currently have a creek master plan as well, which has projects. You'll see, I mean, I'm a little worried we're getting a little off topic, but you'll see, I'm getting a little off topic. But you'll see that, you know, we're having, we're having an award for our local lower holding creek phase three project, one of our top projects in the Creek Master Plan. I believe we're planning to update the Creek Master Plan before too long, if I'm correct.
That is correct. You know, we'll have to, takes a couple of years after this plan that we're doing, the stormwater master plan, to generate, save up enough funding to do the upgrade to the citywide creek master plan. Some of the things that we are looking to inform that plan are the TMDL and the Laguna, also adding a number of the city farms are not included in the storm drain master plan, but they are annexed into the city properties, so we'll be adding sections to the Laguna and then also trying to get more collaboration with local tribes and ensure that our plan is reflective of some of those priorities as well. Those are, those are just some of the big-ticket items that I've been thinking. And then anytime we open a plan, there's tons of little details that get addressed and changed.
With that, I think I will hand it over to Liz Hanley, our supervising engineer at Asset Management, to go over highlights in our plan CIP program.
Thanks, Nick. Yes, Nick mentioned, we're, I'm going to speak to you today about some of the highlights for our CIP project. Everything we're going to walk through, a few projects from each of our areas, water, sewer, stormwater, and regional. I'll just jump into the first slide, we're a little short on time. But here we have project ID one seven one three, station thirteen pump station upgrade, and also project ID one nine eight six, station fourteen, pump station upgrade. These projects will upgrade two of our water pump stations, both in the Oakmont area, both in high fire disparity zones. They were identified in our twenty twenty water master plans. They will install higher capacity water pumps to improve our fire flow rates. They'll also incorporate electrical upgrades, new roofs, security, lighting, and fencing. The estimated project cost is currently at three point four. The estimated project cost is currently at three point four million dollars for station thirteen and three point two million dollars for station fourteen. Both of the projects are in scoping phase now, they are targeted for year one design and construction. Next, we have our groundwater program, we have project ID two four eight six. This is our, um, project's conversion of existing existing wells to production. It will look at the feasibility, design and construction of converting some of our emergency wells into production wells. This project is identified in the city of Santa Rosa's water supply alternative plan. The cost is currently estimated at four and a half million dollars. The project is still in very early scoping stages now. We hope to have it enter design in year one. Construction timing is a little unknown because we're so early, but that's targeted for year three or later. Our next slide is our PID one zero one six six Myers Drive Water and Sewer Replacement Project. It will upsize the existing six inch water main in Myers Drive. This main was installed in nineteen fifty-two and identified in our water master plan. It's undersized for fire flow. We will also, um, sorry, we will also replace our sewer mains. We have six to eight inch sewer mains that were also installed in nineteen fifty-two. The area, um, has some flooding issues during storms. We have our design consultant looking to that, um, to see if there's a feasible and economical way to improve that. You'll see for the cost estimate, we only have twenty-five thousand in there for storm drain. That's for design only at this time, and if they're able to come up with something that is economical and feasible, then we'll pursue additional funding at a little bit later date. The total project's cost is three point nine million dollars with one point seven, um, in water improvements and two point two million in sewer improvements. Currently in design and will be going to construction in year one. Next, we have, um, project ID two four two five, our Lono Truck Rehab Phase Two Project. This project will slip line the northern stretch of the truck line along Lono Road and also rehab its associated manholes. This portion of the trunk line was identified in the twenty twenty sewer master plan as a project, uh, as a priority due to the poor condition of the pipe. The funding and delivery plan for this project currently involves partnering with the US Army Corps of Engineers. The Corps has indicated that they will provide the engineering design and environmentalization for the first phase of the project. Um, and our hope is that we can also receive a commitment from them for construction for all of the phases. This would, uh, for this part, the Army Corps would also provide seventy-five percent of the funding and we would have a twenty-five percent, uh, cost share for the project. The estimated, uh, cost estimate is twenty-one point eight million dollars. Our hope is to enter design in year one and then construction would be phased through years two through five. All of this is contingent on, um, working out agreement with Army Corps, um, and securing the funding through them. Next, we have, uh, our stormwater, stormwater project. Uh, this is PID sixteen oh one, McMan Avenue Storm Drain Replacement Project. This slide highlights the project as the top expenditure for stormwater, but you'll see it also has sewer and water components as well. The project will install approximately nineteen hundred linear feet of new storm drain, uh, in McMan Avenue stretching from Spasable Road down to Roseland Creek. This area currently experiences significant, significant flooding during, um, during storms. And this project will help alleviate, uh, that flooding issue. There's also potential for a large-scale regional LID offset bank facility that could serve, um, as a future LID offset program for city projects. The total project's cost estimate is nine point seven million dollars. You can see it broken out there, um, three million for stormwater, two point nine million for water, three point eight million for sewer. Project is currently in the very early stages of design and expected to go to construction, um, hopefully in year one. Next, we have our regional projects, the first slide is project ID two zero four six, our regional mitigation bank, it's a project. This one will create a Tiger, California Tiger Salamander and Wetland Mitigation Bank. The mitigation bank will occupy approximately a hundred acres of the city's Kelly Farm parcel. This project is rather complex, requiring collaboration with several outside entities, including multi-agency reviews. With a mitigation bank holder. When complete, the mitigation bank will establish credits that future city regional projects can use to offset the environmental impacts of their improvements. The cost estimate is seven point one million dollars. The project is currently at a ninety percent design stage and subject to waiting construction. Next, we have PID two three three zero Delta Pond Standby Generator Replacements. A new emergency generator will be constructed to provide standby power at the Delta Pond Pump Station. Pump Station delivers pressurized reclaimed water from Delta Pond for the West College Main Line. The standby emergency generator is necessary to keep the pump station operational in the event of a power failure. The project will also replace two boilers at the event of gas. We have two gas-fired boilers at the plant, which are used as secondary, secondary source of heat for the plant's digesters. The boilers operate when heating demands are high or in the event that the combined heat and power, um, engines are not running. The two boilers were originally installed in the mid nineteen nineties and have reached the end of their service life. The total estimated, uh, project cost for these two improvements is four and a half million dollars. It's currently in design and expected to start construction in year one. Um, and lastly, we have, um, project ID two four six, our reclamation valve replacement project. It will replace valves that within the reuse system that are not functioning properly or have reached the end of their useful life. The total estimated cost for this project is two point three million dollars. It is currently scoping, expected to enter design in year one and start construction in year two. And with that, I'll hand it back to Nick for schedule.
Hey, just to touch on the remainder of our budget schedule at this point. April third is gonna be a busy day, we're gonna be a sub-tac, uh, that morning to review the regional budget and, uh, with our partner agencies and request their recommendation, uh, to the board. Also, at the full board meeting that day, we're gonna have the O M and C I P study session, followed by a report item requesting your recommendation of the twenty-five, twenty-six regional reuse budget and allocations. That item was necessitated because the, uh, the report item requesting your recommendation of the whole budget package to city council isn't slated to happen until the April seventeenth meeting. However, city council, uh, is going to be considering the regional budget at its April fifteenth meeting. So that necessitated adding a report item to the April third agenda, so thank you for bearing with us through that. Again, uh, city council, April fifteenth for the approval of the preliminary regional budget will request your recommendation on April seventeenth. At the city council of the, the rest of the budget package, not inclusive of regional. And, uh, city council will hold the budget study sessions May sixth, seventh. Uh, water budget is typically considered the second day, so we expect that to occur on the seventh. And budget adoption by public hearing will be held with the council on Tuesday. More than happy to address any questions, any further questions you, you may have?
I, I think everything is great and I'm in favor of this and I'm, and I'm prepared to vote and to make a recommendation. However, it just occurred to me that I might have a conflict of interest. And that is, that, I know each year you ask me for any changes in any real property that I have and I, and I haven't changed that. But I haven't mentioned the fact that I'm on the board of directors of a corporation that owns a house for, for caring for autistic adults that is relatively close to the Myers Drive project. And I, so my question is, what are the proximity limitations on how close it has to be before I can participate?
Under five hundred feet.
I think we are more than five hundred feet there. It's, it's slight thirty-two, but, uh, I just think that's more than five hundred feet. So, okay, I will go ahead and vote that, that, that was the main thing, I, I'll make a motion to approve.
I'm just gonna make some comments, do you have any comments?
No.
Okay, I got a few little comments. First of all, uh, on the LTP reserve funds, um, as I recall, like fifteen years ago when we first started that, uh, we did that so that we didn't have to run to bond council every time we wanted to do something. Uh, but so far, we just seem to be keep adding a million dollars, a million dollars. Is there, is there a, is, what is the, that is not a catastrophic fund, that is only, as I described, a CIP fund to build things with, is that correct?
So for clarity, the, the reserve balances that are considered for credit rating and, and bond, um, security purposes do not involve the regional refund reserve. Uh, that involves the other reserves, uh, on the balance sheet. The re, the regional refund reserve, uh, didn't used to exist ten years ago, or, I don't know, I think it started in twenty fifteen. It didn't used to exist because what we would do was the agencies would pay in. At the end of the year, we calculate a refund and AP issued them a check every year. And then what happened was they decided, hey, rather than you giving us a check for a million dollars and us giving you two more million dollars or, or what have you, they decided to carry that as a reserve balance. So that reserve balance is completely separate and apart from anything used as sinking fund against our debt.
And that is the twelve million that's sitting in the account right now?
Uh, I'm sorry, I'm not sure what twelve.
The twelve, the, the LTP, um, reserve fund or fund that was in there, that's.
Go back to the refund reserve.
I was, actually, that must have happened in two thirty, two thousand and thirteen, because I was at the, um, the regional or whatever you call the contractor meeting or whatever it was, the, yeah.
Is this, is this?
Partner meeting, uh, where to go?
Go back, go back.
You're talking about the CIP.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess it is a CIP fund. I guess what it boils down to has, is that, that?
There you go.
This is the recent refund reserve, but there was an LTP, uh, fund, uh, that would, we add a million dollars to it each year.
That's the actual CIP appropriations, that's not a reserve.
Right, yeah, so, but we, my point is, my question is, I guess, that we're just adding to it. Is there any plans to spend it, one? And, uh, secondly, if there's no actual plans, is it, has there been any discussion to use that money to reduce the size of the debt? Or is it just a contingency, uh, on the, uh, electrical project or, anyway? How is, how's that fund being utilized, I guess that's my question?
Well, theoretically, every dollar that's sitting in the CIP appropriations, including future dollars, has a, a project, it's assigned to a project. And so if, uh, projects don't happen or they get reprioritized or deprioritized, we shift those projects or those project funds to the new project priorities. Um, we do take into consideration existing cash appropriations when we look at debt. Um, so for example, uh, the twenty twenty bond issuance that we issued, it was seventy, seventy million dollars in bonds for the UV project. We had that thought and Santa Rosa actually seriously considered, uh, paying ten or twelve million dollars in cash from the local wastewater fund, which funds our portion of the regional enterprise to, into the CIP fund in order to counteract that debt. But what we found was that the interest rates were so advantageous at that time, that the cash itself was, was worth holding on to and spending on other project priorities. So anytime we consider going out for debt, we do think, we do look at the overall cash picture and, and do factor that in. In fact, um, I believe we have approximately eight million dollars already in the electrical infrastructure project. So we have quite a bit of cash in there and that, you know, as we go down the road for the bond issuance and as part of the bond compliance and credit rating process, we do have to demonstrate that we've thought critically about all these scenarios.
So I guess my question is, what, go on.
The twelve million is our cash-funded CIP for regional.
Right, I understand, but is there projects in, in there?
If you look in year one, and then you look at the summary, uh, uh, on page two, you'll see the total that relating to all the projects each way.
And that is, oh, that's, that's where the twelve million rise, okay, okay, I get it now. I just didn't get, didn't figure that out right off the bat. Okay, now for our asset manager over there, um, the, uh, CIP, uh, management software, what has that been a do for us?
So I, there's two items on, are you looking at?
I just saw that there's a, there's a new project for CIP, um, management software.
Yeah, so we, um, we have allocated a hundred thousand dollars from each fund, um, to this project. That would replace our current, um, CIP tools and database. Uh, project management software that integrates with, um, several other software programs we have, it's used heavily with TPW. Several departments use it, but this project will, um, fund the replacement of that. Right, currently, it's on a really old server, um, that we can't upgrade, it has a bit of a cybersecurity risk.
So this is an existing system that we have and we're just upgrading it.
Upgrading or re, or replacing.
Or replacing it, but with the same, same basic thing. So when our engineers or whatever, oh, turn on their computer, they see, you know, pages and it's, yeah, okay, all right. I wasn't sure if we're just reinventing things or that, okay, that's fine. And then, I'm just curious, the Lono Truck, um, is that the same Lono Truck project that we've been trying to do with, that we did the design build that never actually happened and?
No, it's happening.
Design build happened?
The design build project is, uh, phase one of the Lono Truck, the one that we showed you today is phase two. The phase one design build project will be coming back to us in. Okay, um, we're really close to moving forward with the construction of that project.
And did we, was it design build? Okay, cause for some reason I thought I heard that it wasn't gonna be design build, but, okay. And then, uh, after Bill talked about C I, uh, uh, overhead, the ten percent, can you explain this, the CIP overhead process for the board members? Maybe not you, but probably.
So maybe Nick can. I can explain it and this is a struggle, so I've been here ten years now and, and it's been a struggle talking about capital project overhead in CIP. Because when it comes to project estimation, engineers and accountants alike would like to say, okay, well, ten percent of the project costs or twenty percent of the base contract costs. So just like the citywide overhead, all of our engineers, uh, sit in the CIP division in TPW. So when they charge labor, they charge the two specific CIP projects. So those dollars are captured in the CIP project, but every employee has overhead related to them, right? So, uh, vacation time benefits, all the things that are not project-specific, sit in the general fund ledger as expenses. They need to be reimbursed for that. So the way our system does is at the end of each year, it runs a calculation and it says, for argument's sake, let's say we had a hundred million dollars in CIP spending, uh, citywide. And one water project had ten million dollars of spending. They would take ten percent of the, of the overhead attributable to that team and allocate it to that project. It's pro-rata based on actual expenditures, project by project, related to the whole of the CIP expenditures, multiplied by an overhead base related to engineers, it is completely unpredictable because you don't know how much overhead is truly gonna be charged every year. It's a wildly unsatisfying answer.
Yeah, wildly unsatisfying, and as I recall, the overhead factor is. Yeah, wildly unsatisfying, and as I recall, the overhead factor is like a hundred percent is minimum.
Yeah, so our CIP teams sit in um, sit in the general fund and they have to be, all costs are recaptured on a one hundred percent basis. It's in that, we call it a zero-based budget because revenue should always equal expenditures and that necessitates overhead charge house.
That's just one more aggravation, I feel, and one more reason to have CIP located in utilities. Uh, okay, uh, let's see, I guess that's all my uh, all, all my questions right now.
Can I ask one more inflammatory question?
Right.
Um, when, when you were giving us the cost estimates on each of those CIP projects and you calculated them. Did any of the cost estimates take into account any potential increases in cost resulting from the fact that uh these projects now require project labor agreements?
Oh.
That, that has been a difficult one for us to estimate, um, as you've seen a couple of projects that come through and it looks. I don't know that we have definitive evidence, but it looks as though that, you know, is increasing the cost. Um, it's, we don't specifically have it built into our preliminary like scoping of the project estimates. But as the projects go through their design, go further along, that's something that the project managers and engineers, uh, when they put their estimates together.
Well, I know it's, it's still a work in progress, we're just starting to see the consequences in, in a couple of projects. So maybe not this year, but it seems like maybe next year we might wanna start looking at track record of what's happening and in adjusting cost estimates for.
Well, we first have to get a track record.
Well, yeah, we first have to get something to, 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 to bed and, that's right. Okay, that was my inflammatory question, thank you.
Okay. Anyway. Uh, down to my, uh, so it's my turn to do something here?
He's gonna ask for a motion, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah, can we have a motion, does anybody wanna do a motion?
I will second the motion to recommend that the BTU approve this budget request.
Okay. So now we have for motion, if you're open, uh, do we, let me ask for a public comment on this thing.
Right now, right now.
Right now, okay, is there any public comment? Okay, Madam Secretary, can we have a roll call?
Of course, we're Denver Bartholomew.
Hi.
Vice Chair Noney.
Hi.
Chair Wright.
Hi.
And that passes unanimously.
Thank you all for your information and presentation.
Oh, I have one last question. Very benign, now, uh, the um, the reclamation project that you showed on the screen there, that's all local, that has nothing to do with geysers, does it?
Well, which?
It's, it's not local, it's the low pressure reclamation.
I mean, yeah, but it's not local, but it's not, it's not geysers, yeah, it's our own operator.
It's the low pressure, low pressure irrigation, yeah.
Okay.
Are we diverting any water yet to Jackson family wineries?
Nope.
Have we had?
Oh, that meeting is adjourned, there we go.